I want to welcome Reverend Dr Owen Wilson, who is an educator, an education officer by profession, and a pastor of the Fairview Park Open Bible Church. It's our pleasure to have you Reverend Dr Wilson. It's our pleasure to learn from you. And at this time, I want to hand over to you and trust that what you have to share with us will be a blessing. Over to you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you Sister Barbara for the usual welcome and the moderating of our session, the beginning portions of it. And to my Fairview family, thank you for joining. And to our host church, Tidham Park Open Bible, welcome to everyone gathered this evening. We're going to get into our session tonight. I may have bitten off more than I can chew, but let's see how much we can manage to go through this evening. Whatever we are unable to treat with for this evening, we will just save it for our final session. All right, but we're going to make an attempt to go through all that we have to do this evening. So I'm going to share my presentation with you. And we are going to dive into let's, I just put your thumbs up if you are able to see. Yes, yes, yes. So we're talking about maintaining Christian virtue in trying times. And a very good job in terms of what was like, what our focus was. So what we want to explore sponsors Christians in difficult times. We must first understand the nature of sin, transgression and iniquity. And let me say this particular part of it was sparked as a result of a question that was asked last week. I'm not sure who asked the question in relation to, you know, how the term wicked is used. And I think last week I made an attempt to at least say that when it comes to the Bible uses terminology to define sin, there are more than one. At the start, I want to define very quickly. I mean, there could be an entire study on any one of these particular words, sin, transgression and iniquity, and what that means, at least in terms of getting a basic understanding of those three terms. What does it mean to maintain virtue in times that are challenging? And we want to study the biblical foundation of moral failure and the path towards righteousness. So in that portion, pay attention to a section of the beatitudes, that sermon that Jesus preached and that we label as the beatitudes. So we'll take a look at those eight about this evening. All right, so if you are here, I want to get you involved at least at outset. So let's see how quickly we can do this. I want you to, you can use your phones if you have another device. It might be a little difficult to maneuver the device that you're on to do this. But if you are so equipped, then you can maybe try it. So you're going to type in your browser. You're going to look for, well, type in minty.com. It's on your, on the screen there, right? And you're going to type that code. So you're going to use that code that you see highlighted there. And just answer this question, how would you define or describe trying times? And it's so again, you can type in your browser, minty.com. And when you click on minty.com, you will use the code that displayed there to join. Just a short means of interaction. Are you, are you, are you making the attempt? Let me know. All right, so I'm anticipating at least, you know, a few people are doing so. And so it will ask you, how would you define or describe trying times? And you will have the opportunity to use three words or phrases to say this. All right, so let me stop sharing and go to my actual, my actual page and show. At least two, one response that has come in so far. How many people do we have on? We have 29. Come on, let's see if we can get a few more persons. All right, so that's minty.com. And then you'll use the code that is on screen. Seven, five, six, nine, three, two, five, four. All right, I see a few comments online. Good. All right, I see more coming in. Let me, let me stop here and share so that you too can see what is happening. All right. Okay, you should be able to see now. All right, so what, what will happen is if, if there is a repeat of a particular word or phrase, it will get a bit bigger than the other words. So based on what I'm looking at, it seems very even still right now. All right. Let me see if, if we have more people coming in. All right, I think so far I have 10 out of the five of the 10 persons who are thinking are on. All right, good. So I see, I see the biggest word that we have there is rough. How would you define or describe trying times? Rough, unrelenting pressure, can't catch a break, hard time, lots of disasters, hard, difficult, famine, stress, intense, troublesome, sorrowful. All right, so all these words describe what is referred to, at least for us, those of us who are here, as trying times. I don't know if they're other words, but we can always go back to this. But I'm seeing, all right, six of 12. All right. So thank you for your participation. And I know if we, if we spend a little bit more time to delve even deeper into what these words or phrases mean to each of you, even if you share the same word, you may describe a different situation or a similar situation and your own feelings that emerge from it. But, but it is true regardless of what that situation is as it relates to, you know, just being a trying time. All of these words or phrases do describe the emotions, the thought processes that we go through. All right, and I see a little bit more, some more coming, financial hardship, scary. And then the two largest words that are on screen there is rough and difficulties. So there are at least a couple of persons who would have used these terminologies to describe what trying times are. Desperate, you know? All right, good. All right, so I'm going to stop sharing this and then I'll just jump in. So thank you for your participation with this one. And let me go back to the main presentation. All right, so I this over here and share. All right, so I want to, we're going to explore that a little bit more. And even if it's not this evening in total, we'll, for sure, we'll go back there. So piggybacking on what was said or the question that was asked. And this Psalm, Psalm 32 verse 5, it says, "I acknowledge my sin to you and my iniquity. I did not hide. I said, 'I will confess my transgressions to the Lord and you forgive the guilt of my sins.'" Now, you, you could go through here and you could underline all those words that we mentioned at the beginning, sin, iniquity and transgression. So why is the writer using all of these words, at least in our minds, all of them mean they refer to sin? Right? Why is he using all of these terms to define his state or where he was or where he could have been or where he's coming from? Anybody want to suggest why he would have used all of these words at least? All right, let me see if somebody's typing in the chat. That's your question. So why would he use the word sin? And don't overthink it. Don't, just whatever pops into your mind, just shout it out, just, just say it. Why?
Good night, everybody. Sir, I just figured that he was in a frustrating situation. And based on what you know, what I think I know about sin and iniquity, I'm thinking sin is outward, you know, putting it in our context, maybe him do something he's not supposed to do or say something he's not supposed to say. And then iniquity is internal. You may not respond in a outward way, but you're crossing your mind and you're quarreling some. So that's what came to my mind.
Okay. So, so your understanding is that each of these words have a different degree to which one commits a sin. That's your word. Or at least your thinking.
That's what I think.
That, that, that's a reasonable answer. All right, logical answer. And you are on a good path. Is there one more? Anybody, is anybody willing to, to give a strike at this? Why, why use the word sin? And then you would have spoken about iniquity and then talk about transgression? You know, why?
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
I think these are the things that has caused him to be in a difficult situation. And that is why he's asking to be forgiven.
Okay. All right, so very quickly, let me move to my other slide. Now each of these words have a different meaning in relation to how we sin as human beings. All right, so when we talk about sin, it refers to moral failure. All right, missing the mark. In the Hebrew, I think the word is katha. And in, in, in Greek, it is, but it means missing the mark or missing the goal. All right, so in this case, when we talk about sin, it refers to moral failure, missing the mark of God's standard and falling short of his righteousness. All right, so it has a, it has a very specific meaning in relation to the type of sin that we commit or as human beings we commit. And you could say that as we go further, then all of these words could mean that very same thing. But when we talk about transgression, the word in the Hebrew, pasha, it means to break trust. So you're breaking trust or someone who is betraying a relationship. Right? Now, it also describes rebellion or a broken covenant. So for example, you make an agreement with someone that every day at five, you know, you're going to pick up their children. And something happened for some reason and you decide that you're not doing it anymore. You're not doing it because you don't like how the person treats you. And so you would have done what you call pasha. You would have broken the trust of the individual because you gave them your word that regardless of what is happening, at five o'clock, you're going to pick up their children, their children. Or it, you know, as it relates to, you know, one's vows and you break that trust or you break the relationship, or it could be a business relationship. It's, it's, it's a breaking of trust, a betrayal of the, of the relationship that one, what one, what the party had or the parties had. And then when we talk about iniquity of one, in the Hebrew, it means to be bent or crooked. So like, like a road that is turning, you know, in many different directions, we refer to as crooked. So when we talk about something that should be straight, but it is, is now crooked, that's a pasha. So, so, so when we talk about even sinning, when we are not carrying out what we are expected to do at a particular standard, it is considered to be pasha. It's broken, it's bent, it's not in a straight or standardized way. And so each term reveals a different dimension of our separation from God. And in fact, when you look at the 10 commandments, they are broken into, you know, commandments that are directly sin against God and others that are sin against human beings. And so even when we, we sin against another person, for example, when one commits a murder or steals from another person in a trusted relationship, whether that's be a family or a community or a nation, that's transgression because you have broken trust, you have broken, you have betrayed the relationship that you have. And so that is I thought this thing would have been important to kind of just clarify that for the person who asked that question earlier on. Just to, 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 to kind of swing. The next slide talks about the seven deadly sins. And just in terms of an historical framework from the early fourth century, that terminology came into existence via monk Ponticus. And he used the terminology and later on by AD 5590, Pope Gregory revised it and referred to it as the seven deadly sins. And there is a movie on
Seems as if the Reverend has been disconnected from here.
Internet issues.
Yes, I was hearing kind of in an sound. There are times when he was very low. Anybody else has experienced that?
Yes, but when you have an unstable internet, it's best for him to close video. Because close the camera because that will give him a better.
Well, I guess when he gets back.
I'm sorry about that. All right, Rev, you'll have to sign me in as host.
Oh, all right, you're, you're back in.
Yes.
All right, hold on a second there. Let me just make sure I find. All right.
Okay.
Seeing it?
All right, let me, let me try.
Okay, you're back.
Yes, I'm back. I'm sorry about that. I didn't remember to switch to my home internet service. I was still using my phone data. So once we get going with a lot of movement, it gets a little bit choppy and so on. But that you're back and you're hearing me clearly, I presume. So let's, so tell me, tell me where, where I left you, what, at what point?
Where were you again?
Looking at the difference between transgression and sin.
Iniquity, he was at iniquity, you're explaining iniquity.
That's a long time. All right, that's a long time. All right, so let, let's go back very quickly. So I was saying each term that is used, just as though you see it here, the writer of the psalm was being very specific. So he was asking God to forgive him of sin. And it has a particular meaning, iniquity, transgression. Because when we go to the, 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 how, what exactly what they mean, we see the degree to which he was saying, God, I have done wrong. And so he was making the attempt to ensure that he covered every single base. So when we talk about sin, as we said before, we're talking about moral, moral failure, missing the mark of God's standards or falling short of righteousness. So it's like taking a aim at a target and you miss it. Right, that, that's what it is, this is how the term is used when we talk about missing the mark or missing God's or falling short of the standard. When we talk about transgression now, in the Hebrew, the term is pasha. All right, it means to break trust or to, or to betray someone in a relationship, in a covenantal relationship, in a familiar relationship. So we talk about you have a relationship with a friend and you give that individual your trust, your word that you're going to carry out a particular action. And for some reason, you've exited the friend and decided, boy, I'm not gonna do what I promise. All right, that's pasha. You have transgressed, you have broken the trust. Trust in terms of your marriage relationship. You know, sometimes it's the trust of co-work, coworkers or worker and employee. Right, that kind of trust is broken. And so the terms such as rebellion sometimes, or it can be a broken covenant. You made an agreement with the bank that you're going to pay them back $2,000 at the 25th of every month and you decide, boy, I'm gonna stop paying now. You're going to take a trip. That is a transgression. You have broken trust. And then when we talk about iniquity, it's, it means to, to, to be bent or to be crooked. So you have an expectation to act in a certain way and you start behave in a crooked way. And the same term is used to describe a road that is crooked or somebody's personality that is crooked. It means that you have, have on, all right? You are on a crooked path. And so this means all of these would have had a specific meaning as it relates to how one would have transgressed or failed at meeting the mark where God is concerned. And so they have a very specific meaning in terms of, you know, emphasizing betrayal or mistrust, whether as individuals or, or families, as a nation and a relationship between ourselves and God. Are you with me, everyone? All right, so I would have used that, that question last week as a springboard to, to start this week. It was a very good question and it is just reinforcing how the Bible is in terms of the language. You know, we would have maybe in most, more often than not, just use one word to describe whatever the person did wrong. But the words have very specific meaning. And so with using the context of those words to, to move to our next slide. Now somewhere about the, the fourth century, a monk called Pontius created a list of cardinal sins, leading to what is considered to be this revised terminology by Pope Gregory that is referred to as the seven deadly sins. Pride, envy, gluttony, trust, I'm sorry, lust, greed, anger, slough, or slothfulness. You know, there is a movie on Lifetime. Um, or slothfulness, you know, there is a movie on Lifetime. That, well, it's, it's a series that is referred to as the seven deadly sins. So what they go through in that series to, to look at, you know, um, pride and how that affects. Individuals within a family or in a business, anger, greed and all of these terms. But what, what, what is important to get from this is that each sin. Serves as a gateway to other sins. And the example that is used here, for example, we talk about anger, anger can lead to evil speaking, violent, violence. Violence and, and murder. Now, if you think about Cain and Abel. You know, the Bible described Abel and said to him that sin is at his gate. As a door. And if he's not careful, what will eventually happen to him? And we see exactly what happened. Because he started complaining, started to get upset and eventually murdered his brother. So it's a gateway, it leading into, you know, other things. So the, the, this though is just a human effort to organize or develop. You know, what is referred to as the seven deadly sins through theological reflection and so on. Maybe they were thinking that, you know, these are the central behaviors that lead to a lot of the other. Issues or incidences that are unwanted in our society. Alright, so pressing a bit because I know time is going pretty fast. Now, in our bibles, we have this phrase or this parable. That we read in the book of Proverbs, Proverbs, chapter six and verse sixteen to be specific. Um, and it's, it says, these six things does the Lord eat, eat. And the seventh, and the seventh is, um, detestable. The King James would say, an abomination to him. I, I, I can recall when I was in the classroom. I had a group of first farmers who. They were a handful, lovely bunch, but you know, being great servants, they complain a lot and they talk about. Sorry, this one I tell life on me, this one took my pen to this one. You know, and then there was a situation where people vex with each other for weeks on end and I would. Ask them to recite this particular portion of scripture to get them to realize that. You know, those kinds of things lead to other behaviors that are not wholesome for the classroom environment. Um, I want to tell you even now, some of them, when they see me, they talk about the fact that I forced them to study the scripture. And there were some who are threatened that if they didn't make an attempt to study it, I would give them an attention. You know, but then, but it, it talks about, you know. Um, arty eyes or the, the, the eyes that are proud. It talk about the lying tongue. Goes on to talk about the hands that shed innocent blood. Um, the heart that devises wicked imagination or plots evil. Um, we talk about the fee that is quick or rush. To run or running to do evil, false witness that speak lies. And the one who sows discord among the brethren. Alright, so the, 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 the Hebrew. Language have certain literary patterns or devices that they use. And there are times when they would use this particular device to reinforce a particular message. Um, and there are other times, other instances in the Bible where we see the same usage. If we go, if we look at Isaiah, um, sixty one and verse eight, it talks about, you know, the very same thing. And, and Zachariah, chapter eight and verse seventeen, alright? So if you have the time, you can just take your notes down. And you can look at these particular verses and see what they say. In particular, I'll just, I'll just look at one. Um, so if we look at Isaiah, chapter sixty one and verse eight, it says. For I, the Lord, love justice. I hate robbery and wrong. I will faithfully give them their recompense. And I will make an everlasting covenant with them. Alright, it goes on to talk about their offspring shall be known among the nations and their descendants in the midst of the people. All who sees them shall acknowledge them that they are an offspring. The Lord hath blessed. Alright, so, um, just something to note. Now, it's going to be important because of where, where we're going. So just connecting all the dots here, um, what we said. Um, the couple of weeks ago and in relation to what we are doing now. So when we talk about trying times, there are seasons that detest our faith. And so maintaining virtue, it, it, it is difficult. Especially because the world, you know, threatens to bend us, right? To cause us to walk on the crooked path of, of one. You know, just utilizing the same terms that we spoke about just now. And so even when we talk about the seven virtues that stands in contrast to the seven deadly sins. You know, it is really about maintaining self-control and being courageous. Not in our own strength, but it being rooted in, in God's strength. We mentioned last week that we can't do it by ourselves. We've mentioned from Zacharias, um, it's not by might, it's not by strength, by, by power. But it's by thy spirit, says the Lord. We can't do it on our own. Alright, so let me push on. So what I want to do this evening, I want to spend most of our time here. Is to examine the Beatitudes. Um, the Beatitudes are found in Matthew, chapter five. Um, specifically verse three to twelve, alright? And the portion of the Bible that is typically labeled, um, the Sermon on the Mount. It is one of the most, um, basic of Jesus's teachings. And essential, as it says here, to Christian or Jesus's ministry in terms of his values and ethic. And is considered to be one or the most popular of his discourse, right? Now, the term discourse of us as a specific meaning, right? We won't go in, go in there now, but it's like a, a speech that an argument is laid out. With different points for you to build out the central truth that is being shared or purported. Alright, so there are other instances in the Bible where the term discourse is used, as in the case of the Olivet Discourse. Uh, Matthew twenty four and twenty eight, sorry, twenty, twenty five. And also when we go to the book of, um, John, chapters thirteen to sixteen. The Upper Room Discourse. So in this particular discourse, it, 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 it goes over a number of. Um, chapters in the Bible. I think it starts at chapter five or four. And it goes through to, I think about chapter eight or seven, thereabout, alright? Now, one scholar summarizes the context when this great teaching. Was, was being shared with the people as Jesus, um, presented this, this, this message. And he's, he, he says in relation to the context that there are three, um, profound truths. That are being placed on the table here. One, crisis. Involve the crisis that is involved in becoming a Christian. That's one. Two, the character involved in being a Christian, alright? Centered, um, on the Beatitudes, the eight Beatitudes that we spoke about. And then the challenges involved when Christian characters, character impacts. A pagan culture, alright? So three things, the crisis that is involved in being. Or becoming a Christian. And then what characteristics you're expected to show, display. Similar to when we talk about, you know, maintaining our Christian virtue, alright? Regardless of what is happening around us. So we're talking about maintaining the Beatitudes regardless. Of what is happening around us. And then the challenges involved when Christian character. Impacts a pagan culture, so a world that doesn't expect. Or doesn't want us to live above the fray of sin, alright? Now, um, at the, at the, at the, at the center of this is. The passage of scripture that we find in, um, Isaiah, chapter fifty two. And verse seven. Really? Why is that happening? Am, am I, am I, am I back?
You're back. You didn't go.
Oh, I didn't go?
No.
Oh, I thought, I thought I did. Alright, so let me, let me just continue here. So Isaiah fifty two, verse seven through to eight. Um, speaks about how beautiful upon the mountain are the feet of him who brings good news. Who publish peace, who brings good news of happiness, who publish salvation. Who says to Zion, your God reigns, and you could, can read the rest of it. So Jesus now is in this, this environment. One, one Bible commentator refers to this setting as the first Christian retreat. Or conference, you know, because it was at a point where Jesus was beginning to assemble those. He referred to as his disciples and so he was giving them an invitation, a challenge. To live in a different way. And so he was saying, um, there are many who will come. But there are few who will remain. Matthew seventeen, um, chapters, chapter seven. Chapter seven, sorry, um, verse thirteen and fourteen. And then he talks about, you know, true, the false and the true, the fact that one has to make a decision. Ma- um, Matthew thirteen, twenty two through to thirty. Alright, so you can make note of these and you can look at them specifically, what is said here. And then, you know, Matthew seven, um. Fifteen to eighteen, many say, but few do. You know, the Bible talks about those who hear the word, but they are not doors. And we are encouraged to be more doors than hears. And so he's putting a challenge here before his disciples. Now, the, the, this particular portion of scripture, um, uses for illustration. So after this is said, you are required, we are required, they would be required. To apply what they have learned, alright? So, and, and, and after this, the, the, the terms that are used are very specific, alright? So they talked about salt of the earth. The light of the world, a city built on a hill that cannot be hidden. A lamp on a lampstand or a candle, I mean, in, in a candlestick. And so the, the idea here is that as one. Gains or takes on the Beatitudes, you are going to be salt. You are going to be light, you will be like a city on a hill. You know, if you are a peacemaker, you will be, you'll make a difference in your community. So what we are saying here, regardless of the difficulties that we are going through, we are still expected to be light, to be salt. To be that city on the hill that can't be hidden, to be that light in the candlestick or lamp. Amen. So you would have laid out the eight Beatitudes and then use these illustrative application. To reinforce what was said. Now, John start. Um, Anglican theologian said, the, the, the sermon on the mount is probably the best known teaching of Jesus. Though arguably is the least understood and is certainly the least obeyed, alright? Now, I could take a poll right now and ask the question if you agree with this statement. But because we're pushing on with time, you know, you can maybe just type it in the chat. If you believe that he is right, we talk about blessed are those who mourn for they shall be comforted. Blessed are the meek for they shall inherit the earth. Blessed are those who hunger and thirst after righteousness. For they shall be blessed, are the merciful, for they shall obtain mercy, you know? And, um, I'll say a little bit more why I would have focused on the, on the first four. Because there's a little bit more that we could talk about in relation to that. And then by the time we move a little further in terms of the application of the Beatitudes. They describe, um, a, a, a three-way perspective that we should have, alright? So we talk about, um, the, the, the Beatitudes cause us to look inward into ourselves. So they should cause us to self-reflect. Um, and, and also when we go a little further with the verses. It will show the application to how we should treat our brothers or wife or enemies, the opposite sex. You know, so there's always an application of the word. After the, you get the orthodoxy, you are encouraged to exercise orthopraxy. You do, alright? Now, so after you look inward, there is also the perspective by the time we get to chapter six of Saint of Matthew. To look outwards. So it is impossible to apply these principles on our own, right? Um, unless we look outwards. How do we look outwards? By applying spiritual disciplines such as giving, such as pray. Such as fasting, amen, such as carrying out these godly values. Looking upwards until we see God's value, alright? So, um, so as I said, the, the account of the. What is referred to as the, this Olivet Discourse. It begins with Matthew, chapter five. And as you go through the other chapters, the intention is to show how we look inwardly. Or we look outwardly and now we look upwards. So we talk about removing the plant from our own eyes first. And then by the time we get to, um, verse twelve and twelve and so forth. Of, of Matthew, chapter seven, we talk about the golden rule. Anybody remember what the golden rule is? The golden rule. I think we, we would have shared it at least once. When we're in primary school, our teachers would always remind us of the golden rule.
Do unto others, as you would have them do unto you.
Exactly, exactly, alright? And then we talk about an, an upwards look. Um, verse seven and eleven to eleven of Matthew, chapter seven. Um, verse seven and eleven to eleven of Matthew, chapter seven. Ask, seek, knock, which is pointing to finding, receiving and opening, you know? The, the, as we see God's presence, we knock, um, we ask him and he will satisfy our needs. Good, but let's, let's look at the fact that looking outwards and putting ourselves in other people's shoe will causes us to look around and to apply the Beatitudes. It's only when we are willing to feel, to take on, you know, what others are going through, then we'll truly be able to apply the Beatitudes. We, 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 we don't exercise or apply them in independence of the context in which we are required to, to serve the people of God or the communities, those who don't know Jesus Christ and Lord and Savior. Now, remember that this was a word to the disciples, preparing them to minister to the entire region of, um, Judea at the time, alright? The kind of mindset that they'll have. So it begins with the first one, poor in spirit, what does that mean? Being completely broken of self-will or selfish desire. Now, this is not easy, it requires, um, a, 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 a mindset that realizes that God is our strength. You know, it requires humility. I often say to people, um, who are in a marital relationship, that when, you know, you're not seeing eye to eye as husband and wife, one of the best ways to get back on board with each other is to go into prayer. I believe that prayer is a strong weapon to loosen the whole of the enemy and causes us to be very humble and, and, and into a, a state of humility. Because if you're honest in prayer, you'll have to be humble. And if you're praying together, you know, you'll have to say, God forgive me, God forgive us for being upset, you know? Um, and there is an illustration about, you know, a pastor who, uh, a church gave a medal of humility because he was so very, you know, proud of who he was and what he often did. Um, didn't really like it, that they would have given him a medal of such stuff. But to be broken in spirit refers to being, you know, humble and willing to give up your own desire in order to please God. Now, one of the things that is said also is that these Beatitudes walk hand in hand. They are considered to, to be couplets. So to be poor in spirit is meshed with, um, those who mourn. Blessed are those who, who mourn. And so if we reflect on even Peter's state when he betrayed Jesus, it led him to be very remorseful about what he had done. And so being mournful is not someone who goes around and cries about the condition of their lives. But it is one who is moved by the situations around them when we do mess up, when we do step out of line and we have that spirit of just being sorry for what we did. The Bible talks about, you know, those persons would be comforted. We think about David, that in spite of David's sin, in spite of all that he did, the word of God describes him as a man after God's own heart. As we move to the other, um, the attitude, blessed are the meek. Um, this may be the most misunderstood of all the Beatitudes. Um, because oftentimes meekness is viewed as weakness. And I'm not sure if I should have shared this already, but at least in my interpretation, definition of what meekness is, I see meekness as strength under control. So you have the will to exercise much harm, but you make a conscious decision that you're going to exercise restraint, not because you couldn't have, but because you trust to, and that takes strength. The Bible talks about Moses, he was the meakest man. Um, and from our interaction, we know that he was not a weak man. You know, when we examine his life and we look at who he, he is, what he, what, uh, who he was, we realize that he would have decided to live his life in honor of God. Um, so when we think about what that means to us as Christians, um, Matthew, chapter eleven, verse twenty-eight and thirty, says, come to me all who labor and ha- and are heavy laden, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn of me, for I am gentle, lowly in heart, and I, and you, and, and you will find rest for your souls. He talks about, for my yoke is easy and my burden is light. Being meek, you know, taking on what God, um, sends our way. The, 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 i- i- it also describes an individual who we're talking about maintaining our virtue, one who is submitting themselves to God. You know, sometimes conflicts arise, whether within ourselves or with other people. And it is now the individual who is being spirit-led. Spirit-led because they are spirit-filled. Spirit-filled because they are spirit-controlled. You know, the Bible talks about the fact that the, 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 the prophet is one who is subjected to the spirit, you know? Regardless of what is happening, the prophet is subj- subjects himself to the spirit of God. So the spirit can rule. Um, so it's having a heart controlled by God, you know? Again, if we talk about the, the commandments, the point two, honoring God first. And if we honor God, then we honor man. Um, so the, the other Beatitude, um, in verse six, blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be filled or they shall be satisfied. So after we submit to Christ's control, then we hunger and thirst for righteousness. Amen? Promise to be full of righteousness. And, 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 and it is God's righteousness, not our own. And, and so we can't confuse this with being happy. There's a difference with being happy and being righteous. So while it is important to, to be happy, to be glad, it is, I think it is even more important to exercise righteousness, amen? I, I look at the, how the Bible uses, you know, love and what it means for the believer. And the Bible talks about that, the greatest of all the gifts, it is, it is love. Because, and love is an expression of righteousness. When the writer talks about meekness, he's also pointing to the fact that meekness leads to righteousness. Paul, in the book of Romans, utilizes the theme of righteousness um, very strongly in the first four, four, four chapters, right? Um, and so he talks about, God is righteous and he desires for us to be righteous. Now, the next four chapters, chapter, um, five to eight describes how w- w- we can live as righteous people, alright? Um, and how it is possible to do this, how we can get right, how we can do right, how we can live righteously. And he, he, he explains that in a very, um, systematic way. Now, as I said before, that two of the Beatitudes, it is said that they should be fused together, they work with each other. Now, we'll talk about righteousness. A righteousness, while it has a horizontal, um, application, um, it's not vertical, it is vertical, not horizontal. So the, I, I would say there is, there is a vertical, there is a horizontal relationship. When we talk about horizontal relationship, we're talking about the, between me and you or you and another person, but it is more vertical. It is how God sees us, is how our relationship with God, you know? Because man looks on our outside, but God is the one that sees who we truly are. He knows who we truly are. And that's why he was able to say to the, the, the generation of his, of the day that their righteousness must exceed those of the Pharisees, alright? So if, if we look specifically on verse twenty of, um, chapter five, it says, for I tell you, unless your righteousness exceeds that of the scribes on the Pharisees, you will never enter the kingdom of heaven. So even if we think about, we don't have the Pharisees and the Sadducees anymore, but our righteousness is not about how we live to please our pastor or how we live to please the person who we rub shoulders with. But it is really how we live to honor and please God. The Bible says that our righteousness is like filthy rocks. And the only way we can be viewed through the lenses as being right is when we are washed in the blood of Jesus Christ and live according to him. I don't know if Sister Bailey is here, but I, I remember sharing this presentation, or portion of it in two thousand and twenty-one. And when we were at a certain point in the presentation, Sister Bailey, um, said this, that the Beatitudes are godly attitudes to be, to cultivate and to live by. Alright, to cultivate and to live by. Now, the other one that follows is blessed are the merciful. So if we think about, you know, Christian virtue, one attribute that should be a feature of our lives is being merciful. It says, for they will obtain mercy. Now, now what is being merciful? Um, uh, here it says, it's a, it's a channel of God's love. Um, those who love unconditionally. And it's also attached to grace, so grace is that attitude of God that he, that he gives us all kinds of wonderful things. Um, many, many, many things that we do not deserve, but he gives them to us just the same. And then we'll talk about mercy, it's unconditional love withholding from us the things we do not deserve. So when we talk about blessed are the merciful, for they shall obtain mercy. When we exercise mercy, God in turns exercises mercy to us. It's an attribute, hallelujah, that we share it, you know? At the same, not to the same degree. Now, Dr., um, Martin Lloyd Jones, one Bible commentator, in, in looking at this particular sermon on the mount, he says that the Beatitudes can be seen as a stair step or a stairway. The first four takes us on top of the mountain and the other four takes us down the mountain. The mountain experience should lead us in becoming changed people as we come down to minister. So we go up the mountain and he's saying that the first four Beatitudes is like that first step taking us up. Alright, but we don't, we, you, you know, the song that says, um, we can't stay on the mountain. I don't remember all of it now, but we have to, we have to come down. Um, and, and that's how it is, you know? If I think about us young people, and some of us are not so young anymore, when we go to these camp meetings or these, um, retreats, the double O double retreat or the Minervaishan Retreat or whatever, special retreat, we go, we go out and we get these mountain top experience, we can't stay there, we have to come down, you know? Um, and so he says that the first four, poor in spirit, they, they, they are internal, poor in spirit, those who mourn, blessed are the meek, blessed are those who hunger and thirst after righteousness. He describes them as the, the coming, the coming attitudes, alright? And then being merciful, pure in heart, peacemaker, um, being blessed because you are persecuted for righteousness are what he ref- refers to as the going attitude. So as you live out your Christian experience, these are behaviors, expectations that will come at you as you do ministry, to be merciful, to be pure in heart, to be a peacemaker, to undergo experience persecution for the sake of righteousness. And so it is not head knowledge, but heart knowledge. When we talk about being merciful, right? Um, i- it, just in terms of account, it is said that the, the term mercy or allusions to it appears three hundred and sixty-five times in the Bible. It's almost saying that for every day that we live, that we are either recipients of God's mercy or we should be showing God's mercy. That's my interpretation of the three sixty-five now, alright? And so Psalm twenty-three and verse six says, surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life. You know, I, I do wonder if, when the writer would have used all the days of my life, if he knew that mercy, whether directly or indirectly, would have been referred to three hundred and sixty-five times. And I shall dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Um, and so it is connected with blessed are the pure in heart. For they will see God. Now, pure in art, the terminology pure in art is, is referred to as a, a, a catheter, catharize, catheterize. Forgive me if, if, if I'm not saying it properly. But what it means is the process that you, you perform usually a regular bodily, bodily function and you, you can't do it anymore. And so you, you are too displaced inside the body so that you can rid yourself of that waste. And so when we talk about a spiritual catheter, we're talking about, you know, when the Bible says in Proverbs four and verse twenty-three, keep your heart with all vigilance, for from it flow. For from it flow the spring, springs of life. You know, the Bible says we should guard our heart, and one person says. You don't guard things that are not valuable. You only guard that which you perceive or consider to be valuable. So when the Bible, the Bible talks about. Guarding our hearts, it's because it is important to how we live. The the psalmist would have written the psalm in Psalm one hundred and thirty nine. And he says, search me, oh God, and know my heart, I pray. Is as if he was addressing in this prayer, you know? God, referring to the God who knows him, the God who knows. Him and how he is made up, the God who has made a plan for him. And the God who thinks about him. And so when we read that entire psalm. That is the expression that we get, you know, from from David. As he he writes about, you know, God searching his heart. You know, we sing the song in church, may not sing it as much as we used to back in the day. Search me, oh God, and know my thoughts, I pray. Um, but you know, when I sit down. And when I rise up, you discern my thoughts from afar. You search out my path and my line down. You are acquainted with all my ways, even before a word is on my tongue. Behold, oh Lord, you know it altogether. You know, he goes on to says, you hem in me, or you hem me in. Um, behind and before, you know, i- i- it's as if. Well, this is the truth, that God knows everything about us inside and out. Um, and so when we talk about the heart, it's not just. A physical organ that beats to pump blood through our body, but it is also. You know, that seed of our emotion, the heart, the Bible says, is desperately wicked. And above, desperately, um, deceitful, above all things. Um, desperately sick and who can understand it. The writer goes on to says, I, the Lord, search your heart and test the mind. To give every man according to his ways, according to the fruit of his deeds. So so we talk about, you know, living, maintaining our Christian virtue. We have to give our heart to the Lord so that he can arrest, you know, our wayward ways. And so we can incline our ears to his commands. And now it's now, um, three minutes after nine, alright? So what I'm going to do is just spend maybe about five minutes just to. Get us to a point, um, so that when we come next week, we'll just pick up from there. Alright, now, blessed are the peacemakers. For they will be called the children of God. And so in going back to the image of the stairway, we talk about the forthcoming. Attitudes, coming to God attitudes, and then the foregoing attitudes going to humanity. Alright, blessed are the peacemakers, referring to those who. Seek or act as reconciliators. So Second Corinthians five addresses the issue of, you know, recruiting. Um, reconcilers. And so verse four, fourteen, um, fifteen seventeen. Speaks about the miracle of reconciliation, you know, we are the recipients of that miracle. Right? And then it moves into the ministry of reconciliation. And then the message of reconciliation, and fourthly, the method of reconciliation. Being reconciled to God. Um, God is our God in in Christ reconciling the world. Now, one writer, Ananu- Ananu Mus, um, says. It is the will of the reconciler. That the reconciled should be agents of reconciliation. In the lives of those who have not yet been reconciled. You know, playing with the old terminology, that we have been. Recipients of the work of the reconciler, Jesus Christ. And as the reconcile, God has recruited us in this ministry of reconciliation. So that those who have not yet been reconciled can experience the gift of reconciliation. That's what the 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 attitudes pointed about. Now, I'm going to leave us with this one. Where we started, um, this evening, and so we'll pick up from here when we come next week, you know, um. The Bible talks about blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness sake. The 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 main, um, vine or the main stem. Of what we're talking about here is how we maintain our Christian virtue in trying times. And and when we started out, we said, we use many terms to describe what trying times are, you know, they they can be personal. They can be things that we experience as a family, sometimes as an entire nation. And more importantly, as a Christian community. So Jesus was saying to them. You know, you are going to experience some difficult trying times. We label that as being, you know. Persecution, right, for righteousness sake, but stand your ground. There are many who would have, you know, lost their lives. Because the fact that they stood for Jesus Christ. Some were in chains because of this message in Jesus's day. In the days of the apostles, in the days of the early church fathers, you know, such as. You know, um, s- um. The 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 some that we we often refer to, um, when we study early church history. Um, Justin Martyr, um, people like Polycarp. Would have lost their lives because of this gospel. Today. You know, we hear of situations in places like Nigeria. Where Christians are being beheaded because of their faith. I mean, in Jamaica, we don't experience that, but we do have situations in the West. Because of your faith, you are ostracized, you are, you lose your job. Today, we live in a world, at least sightings from around two thousand and twenty. Says more than a quarter of a billion Christian, the Christians currently face high levels of persecution. Um, so much so that it is, it is worrying, you know, um. When when this was was polled, the open doors, that's the 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 group that watches. Um, this kind of thing, um, would have shared instances of severe persecution. That the Christian community is experiencing. Um, sometimes you don't hear it because it is happening in countries that are not considered to be. You know, important to the world's affairs, but it does happen. And so the organization reported that over two billion Christians experienced significant persecution. In fifty countries that are on the watch list. Um, and it has increased from the previous year. Now, this was, um, twenty twenty. What I'm going to do is make sure that I say if I can pull some data for where we are now. But that's what the reality, um, was in 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 twenty twenty. And so, um, the value system of Jesus is is different from that of the world. And so you and I are in a state of grace when and if. We are persecuted, when we experience difficult and and trying times. Alright, so what I'm going to do is leave it here for this evening. Um, and I will pick up right here when we come back next week. Um, and then we'll center more in relation to what does it mean? When the Bible talks about blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness sake. Um, how do we live when things get difficult? Whether on a personal level or at the level of the church. Or as a nation, well, how do we live? So that at the end of the day, we maintain the standards of virtues. That Jesus Christ endures and encourages to. Execute and to live by. So thank you this evening. Um, I'm sure if there are any questions, comments, I'll just take them quickly. And then we can wrap for this evening.
Any questions or comments?
Alright. Alright, so I want to thank you for coming out this evening and trust that you are blessed. And we look forward to our final presentation next week, alright? Thank you. We'll just pick up from here and, um, seek to close this series. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my friend, my brother. Thanks everyone for coming out. And we we have a thing that you 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 must not. Restrict your interest to the night's presentation. But take what is presented here and go like diligent. Noble Christians in Berea. Go search for yourselves, and if there are questions, still direct them to to. Your your pastor or elders, anybody who you think you would want to. Invite into this discussion for for clarity. We we don't just want to hear, we want to be heeding, taking heed to what we hear. Let's bow heads for prayer. Thanks again, Reverend Pastor Boyen.
Yes.
Thank you brethren for joining in tonight. We close with prayer. So Lord, we ask again that you would make us not just hear us of your word. But that we would be those. We appreciate, Lord, that it is you who work in us. Both to will and to do what is pleasing to you. Grant us grace, we pray. To purpose in our hearts.
Yes, Lord.
Heed your holy spirits' promptings. And to allow you to live in us. To live through us. To impact our families and our coworkers and our communities. As we part, as we contemplate. The the coming of Melissa. Lord, grant your people peace. Grant us the. Willingness to look outward. To to be kind and merciful, to seize opportunity. To witness for you as light and salt. Here our prayer, we ask you in Jesus' name. Amen. Have a good night, everybody.